I'd like to call to order a special meeting in the Florida School Committee on Monday, November 9th, then please call the roll.
Ms. Dyer, now, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dias.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Flarvie.
Yeah.
Ms. Peraro. Eric Coogan.
Here. Do you need to flag?
My allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting to any media. Attentives are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether received or unreceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Any citizens input to this room?
No.
Okay. So we're going to do this on the school year, 24 goal setting facilitated by Dr. Tracy Curly, superintendent of the school. Go ahead, Trace.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a question for clarification?
Mr. Aggar.
This is the goal-setting meeting, but has nothing to do with the evaluation, correct? Is that what they agreed upon, like so?
I believe so, yes, that's.
So if, this is basically like the same goal-setting of every, the past several years?
Right, I think what we would have done in August potentially, and I think we will do next August, this is the goal-setting for this current school year, '24, '25.
It's not like scaled down because of the evaluation to totally separate thing?
No.
Thank you. I yield.
So, what I offered here are three goals that are meant to serve as a starting point for the goal-setting process. We, I'm participating in the new superintendent induction program, and they utilize the Department of Ed, Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed structure for the goal-setting process. And these are three goals that are recommended by, by the department and through the new superintendent induction program. So I used, generally, generally used the three goals that were there. They were tweaked a little bit for the purpose of, you know, some things that are specific to the district, but generally speaking, these are the suggested goals for new superintendents across the state. So Goal One is effective entry and directing setting by late spring. The district will gain broad recognition from key stakeholder groups about its most critical needs, with a clear process underway to identify strategies and goals that effectively address those needs. And key actions include that by early spring, I would complete and present a report of entry findings, synthesizing evidence collected and outlining strengths, critical improvement areas, and next steps. By mid-August, I would present a draft strategic plan to the school committee that considers data and findings from the report of the entry findings, the AIR Comprehensive District Review, and the Collins Center Review of the Human Resources and Facilities and Operations Departments. There are benchmarks along the way, which would include some presentations completed on a schedule, and we could determine a schedule, some strategy development process launched, which would happen, you know, in the spring, and then results. We consider the results of spring survey of key leaders, including administrators, teacher leaders, school committee, union leaders, demonstrating awareness and engagement in the entry process, and confidence that the entry, reported entry findings captures important insights about the state of the district and issues that require attention. The second goal is centered on maintaining momentum during the transition, specifically ensuring that the district continues to progress during leadership transition by collaborating with principals and district leaders to make meaningful advancements on essential district and school goals. So this is one that's really focused on, yes, as, you know, throughout the entry plan, learning, you know, continuing to learn about the district and all its, all of its departments, but making sure through Goal Two, that we don't lose sight of our instructional priorities and the goals set there. So, the first key action would be regular participation in meetings of the district instructional leadership team, including the meetings that they have and learning walks. By April 1st, completing formative evaluation conferences with each principal and district administrator. By late spring, conducting at least three school visits at each school. And by June 30th, analyzing goal process of progress and completing some of the evaluation reports for all supervisees. Benchmarks would include completed educator evaluation plans and a log or notes demonstrating at least three visits per school, so I would be sharing that with you. And then the final goal is around my professional practice development through the induction program with the new superintendent's induction program. So enhancing skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by actively participating in the new superintendent induction program throughout the year. Key actions would include attending the sessions, completing the assignments, and meeting with my assigned coach at least monthly with benchmark progress by calendaring documents, but showing that my calendar documents, attendance, and contact with my coach, and verification from NIS of itself that I actively engaged in the first year of the program.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Mr. Dias and Mr. Corey.
Thank you. I'll start off with a few, this is my first goal-setting, reading of a goal-setting, so I'd love to hear if this is like up to par and like, will others look like in the past? But a few questions I'd like to start off with is the induction program. What's the cost of the district?
I want to say it costs maybe about $4,000 or something. I don't really know what's off the top of my head.
And are you the first superintendent within the district that you know of to be a part of this program?
No, I believe Superintendent Ponce participated for two years. Maybe her first two years. It's a three-year program.
Okay.
So I would intend to participate.
And you're finishing up the final year?
I'm finishing up the first year.
The first year, you plan on being in for three years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And just want to speak a little bit about Goal One, and as you're well aware at this point, and I'm sure we'll talk about it more as a full committee at the meeting today, the Collins Center Review. Again, I'm of the opinion we need to go a step further, especially with Facilities and Operations Department, and go with a full audit, and not just go with the review. There's obviously a lot of issues and concerns that, you know, make an audit well-recommended, and hopefully we go forward with that. And I'd like to see that in the goal-setting, and hopefully the committee supports that as well. I'll yield at this time here for my other colleagues.
Mr. Corey.
So, yes, Madam Superintendent, my question was involved in Goal Two, where it says by April 1st, to complete the formative evaluation conferences with each principal and district administrator, and is that for strategy purposes for the next school year beginning in September? Because formative reviews, it's already springtime, we're heading into the last semester, that sort of thing.
So where things get, yeah, where things get confusing with some of, with principals specifically, is that their evaluation process runs similarly to the superintendent, and that we do wait on, until fall, because we wait on those MCAS results to complete their evaluations.
Yeah.
So they start their goal-setting, but then we're doing the evaluations, and so April would really be the time that is pretty much the midway point for them, and then we would continue. It does get a little bit tricky because of the timing.
So my, my biggest concern is like when a new school year starts in September, you know, to, to have strategies in place so that we can hit the road running in September. That's what I'm, that's all I'm at.
That, so what happens is before we leave, so in the springtime, we also use, we take the opportunity at the district level to do planning around instructional priorities, and then we introduce those to principals. Principals take those instructional priorities, and they are developing their school year plans based on those.
Yes.
That starts for them in the late spring and through the summer with a goal on having something in place when school starts.
Good, thank you. I yield.
Mike, I have a question. The three school visits. Do you go alone? Who do you take with you? What are you looking for?
I think this will be mixed. I mean, when, so I, I might go alone and just walk with a principal. We're also conducting larger-scale, I don't want to call them events, because we tried to make them pretty uneventful, but with the district ILT. So I will go with assistant superintendents, principals. We all visit a school. Go, we look at classrooms, we examine student work, and then the school principal gets feedback. So I would include those as well as any other visits that I do to schools.
In your evaluation, is that principal also, based on what you see?
Right, and so I don't evaluate every principal, but we do use these, sure.
So it's strictly not just instruction? These are not the, it's classroom management, it's everything that, they're benchmarks as well, correct?
So we, so when we do the district ILT walks, we use a very specific rubric. We have our, you know, we, we conduct our observations the same at every school. We format that, that meeting, the debrief afterward in the same way to give feedback to the school. We have a looking at student work protocol in which we engage. So it is, so that, that piece of it is uniform. That piece of it is uniform. And I would say I don't want to give the impression, so we, I, I don't want principals to get the impression that those are evaluative. They're, those kinds of walks are actually supportive of the school. It gives us and, it gives the district an eye on, you know, looking at across schools what's happening. It gives other principals an opportunity to see practices in schools and give feedback, and then as a principal hosting the walk, you, you get the feedback. So it's, it's very collaborative, it's very, you know, it informs everybody for different reasons, and I think everybody takes something out of it. But that in particular, I wouldn't use for evaluation purposes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything that's going to be changed from the former administration to your administration as far as this, this portion of your goals?
Um, I, I would think that, I don't recall the last goals in particular, but I would think that these are pretty standard in terms of making sure that we're giving feedback and that we're monitoring feedback to, you know, supporting principals to make sure that they're doing their unannounced evaluations they're doing, they're offering the feedback in a timely fashion so that we're supporting teachers.
I took your time. Anything for, Mr. Aggar?
So, one of my questions you just answered, and I'm trying to figure out what this actually is. So, one of my questions was, did this, the prior superintendent goals, the last two, let's say, did that drive any of this document? And based on your answer, I'm assuming you didn't look at it to know?
No, I mean, I've been here, I don't remember exactly whether or not the key actions in Goal Two that we're talking about were key actions in that. I think that previously, my understanding, my knowledge of the goal-setting was that there were goals associated with every single department. We did instructional goals, there were goals around facilities and operations, there were goals for human resources, there were all of those things. And what has been suggested to me, and I, obviously, I subscribe to it, is that this isn't going to be a year where my, where I'm going to be judged on how well other departments are running per se, because they've been running the way they've been running for, you know, many years, good, bad, whatever it is. And I wouldn't be able to take credit for that, and I wouldn't be able to be slammed for that, for lack of a better word, because I'm new to the position. And this is an opportunity, as reflected in Goal One and in Goal Two, to kind of maintain during the transition, make sure the work continues, take an opportunity to take a step back, evaluate, see what we see, because this year should result in an improvement plan for the district.
So, I would have to tend to disagree with some of what you just said.
Okay.
So, when you, when I look back having sat here for the last two goal-setting sessions, this is nothing like what we had before. So there was actual goals, there was data, there was information, there was measurable attendance goals, there was measurable achievement goals. This is sort of like a generic, like, okay, this is kind of the things that every superintendent would do, like you said. If you're a superintendent in Newton or Lexington, this committee or whatever that place is, is going to recommend these type of Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three, like you said. This is for, with a totally different set of needs, with a totally different trajectory of where we're at, and quite honestly, I don't think this meets the standards of what I would consider it.
Sure.
So maybe there's another goal coming or some kind of, I don't know. That's why I asked the first question, like, what is the point of this? Because I, for one, am not going to vote to approve goals that don't have any data in it. They don't have any measurable outcomes in it. And I would hope that you're not going to approve any goals for your assistants or your principals that are as generic as this and sort of like top, just top level.
Sure.
So that's where I'm trying to find out.
So I want to be really clear. So these are the suggested goals from the Department of Ed for first-year superintendents. So that is one thing, I want to make sure I say out loud, this isn't like a committee or a random person, this is the Department of Ed that recommends these goals as a starting point. So I am open, obviously, I, I thought this was going to be a collaborative kind of thing, I am open to adding goals and, and additional benchmarks, so I would just want to hear exactly what that would look like.
And similar, we've had in the past, first read of the goals.
Mm-hmm.
And second read of the goals after you take some feedback.
Yep.
And then we sort of?
Sure.
Come to a document. I'm just telling you as this member, I would like you to go back to the old goals, just to review kind of what they were, because everyone got a chance to weigh in.
Yep.
Everyone was, so we were able to weigh in, we would give suggestions. The thing that bothers me, every year we set goals, is that the superintendent sets the goals, not you, in the past, and says, we're going to meet the attendance goal, let's say, of X percent. And then you're going to now, in order for you to meet your percent, all the principals would have to obviously meet that percent so that we're all the same.
Sure.
So at that point, the year ends, we never get anything to say, remember that goal we said? We met it or we didn't meet it. It just sort of disappears into space. So then when we try to say in the, in the evaluation or anything, we don't know whether we met them or not. So at last year's meeting, I suggested to the superintendent, did you meet the goals that you, we jointly came up with the year prior? I still am waiting for that answer, because we didn't get an answer. So all I'm asking is if you can go back and look, same question, I want to have the same question.
I know what, I know what that goal looks like. I mean, the first goal in, in the superintendent's, actually even for two superintendents in a row, the first goal was pretty much the same. Said we were going to make moderate to substantial progress toward the accountability targets, and then it listed each indicator that we would do it for math and ELA. We have more specific goals internally in terms of the progress that we want to see for our English learners and for our students with disabilities. I would prefer to, instead of defaulting to the entire accountability system, I'd prefer to, you know, to present some goals that would be more closely aligned with the targeted work that we're doing this year with those populations, and so I can offer that to the committee.
Yeah, I just, I'm just giving you my feedback.
Sure.
That we need to get a little more granular on what it is.
Yeah.
And then be able to measure it in the end. So it's not, it's not going to be a debate whether, did you meet the goals or not? Has nothing to do with personalities or anything, just did you meet the goals, yes or no? You could not meet the goals and have a hell of a year, a good year, you know, so just like we would tell us, teacher.
Yeah, just like we do with teachers, absolutely.
All I'm saying is, I for one was expecting a little more robust pieces with that. When I look into the second one about the evaluation, you're going to do a formative and a, that's an expectation of us to have, for you, you to have of your staff.
Yep.
That everyone's following this. This is just what you're agitating, what is the basic expectation of being an administrator? So that's just a, to me is not a waste, but it's, you could in one sentence say, we're going to follow, make sure that we're, we're with fidelity following all the laws and regulations related to evaluation, and then recover this entire. Nothing in here is different than basically what everyone should be doing, the way I see it, just my own opinion. The school visits, if you look back to last year's goal-setting, it was a similar type of thing. And we said we're going to go school visit, you know, superintendent's going to go to school visits. I suggested at the time, and the committee agreed, and the goals indicated such, that we were going to get copies of the outcome of those walk-throughs, whatever the wording was. I'm still waiting for those. So what I would suggest is if we're going to have something where you're doing several school visits per year, to kind of give an assessment of where things are, that we get copies of it. That's my only request. It's not an evaluation, as you said, it's my findings. I just walked in, this is basically the feedback, because we can't tell if, what kind of feedback you're given if you don't tell us and show us the documents and the feedback that you're giving to those folks. The same thing was said last year, so it's consistent.
Sure. So I do think that the, and maybe I don't know fully the way this would land today, but I do think that the purpose of meeting like this is so that we can determine some agreed-upon benchmarks, it, you know, so that it is supposed to be a collaboration. And so I'm taking notes, and I would welcome to hear feedback from everybody so that I'd know, like, is that the flavor of what people are looking for, so that I make sure that everybody gets what they need, I guess.
So, we're already late?
Well, I, I know. And so I do want to say that I, I feel like in the spirit of staying on schedule, everybody defaulted to, let's make sure we get an evaluation in. And everyone should have defaulted to, let's make sure we start the process on time and get this on an agenda for August, because it does feel very late to be still having a discussion about what the acceptable benchmarks will be for my evaluation.
But we said this isn't part of the evaluation.
This will be for next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
But for this year?
Mm-hmm.
This current year that we have to write, you know, we're writing an evaluation over the next 30 days. It doesn't include this.
It does not, you said.
It does not.
Right.
So if I'm looking at it and I'm saying, you became superintendent July 1, July, August, September, October, November, December, we're six months in, and we're just talking about the proposed goals, you, now I know that you've had discussions, you've had to have had discussions about goals with your team. We, I've just seen this now at 4:45, 4:35, whenever I read this, on December 10th, or whatever the date is.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I'm saying we're late, in my opinion. So, the first shot of this, of here's what my goals are when I, since I've been superintendent July 1, and we're now going to wait and see, like, I guess we're going to have a special meeting or another meeting to determine when is this, when is the second read of these goals. So now we're, we're backing it up another one, so we're going to be 50% through your first year as superintendent, and we're not going to have any goals listed, set, or anything. That to me, as one member, is not acceptable for me saying, oh yeah, this is, looks great, this general thing looks great. So I appreciate the collaboration. We probably should have done this in August.
Mm-hmm, I don't disagree.
So I, that's why I'm sort of confused. How we, how are we here today? And this is the first time we're talking about it. And it's, it's not, the substance isn't the issue. I tell you my questions, we've had systems in the past what they look like. So knowing what those systems look like in the past, we're still here now, almost six months later, we don't have anything that looks anything like the committees have approved in the past. I personally think that is a problem. I don't know if I have an answer for it, but I don't know what the system's going to be, when we're going to meet again, but if this is the first read, when is the second read? I yield.
Okay. Tommy.
So, Madam Superintendent, you've been assistant superintendent for quite a while now. Before Dr. Malone, were you an assistant superintendent?
Yeah.
So you became assistant when he became, so you sat?
When you left.
You sat through his administration, and then you sat through Superintendent Ponce's administration. So you have a really good overview already of what's going on with the entirety of the district. And so given that, with, with your goals in mind, are you implying that goals are a moving target because maybe what's important now wasn't as important pre-COVID, or so to speak? Are, are your strategies similar to what they were proposing, or are you varying from that standard?
No, it's not. I can commit, I mean, by Friday, if, if it is the will of the committee, I will submit goals to you that look like the ones that Superintendent, Superintendent Ponce did. And my goals will look different from every first-year superintendent in the state.
Yeah.
That's what I'll do.
I wasn't, and basically I was, I was.
No, Trace.
No, like, I honestly, I, we have the goals, we have the goals. It would be easy to set those goals. It's fine.
Why would we not want her to do that?
Okay, Kevin, you're on the floor. Right, Tommy?
So, no, I was, I was basically getting at, I'll bet you have a really good idea as, as to what's going on, because you've been there and you did, you've been around the block a few times with, with the previous superintendents, and what the challenges are in our, our schools are. And I really appreciate the fact that on your learning walks, you're going there not to evaluate, but to support and advocate, you know, on behalf of what's going on inside the buildings, because we need to support our buildings as best we can. I think that you've got a great attitude as far as that's concerned. And what I'm mostly concerned about isn't per se the, the, well, I think all your goals are legitimate, but I think that if, if you could promote great attitude from top on down, if you can build the attitude from, and the morale from top on down, then that to me is the greatest goal we can have. And I don't know that that could, you can have any empirical data on that. That's more of an emotional thing, a feeling thing. And I think you're in a good position to start doing that. I think you have a great vision of our district, and I'm willing to be very patient to see how you outline things in the future, and I'm, I'm willing to be a partner with that. So thank you, I yield.
No, I was going to say.
No, I, I, I know that when you give us your final work, those things will be included to the best of your ability. I think you're under the gun because you came in late, and we're, we're moving slowly on this. We're, we're going to have this done in an appropriate time and scale. And I, as you know, I visit every school and I, myself, and I don't hear anything bad going on. The only thing I see is, our only shortage is sometimes staffing for certified teachers in the room, so I would make that a goal to improve that, but that's not all you, that's the district, and hopefully we get this done tonight or shortly with the contract so that we can start to attract some lead linear. But I'm not really, I'm not really worried about what's going on right now in this district. I think you're doing a good job, and I'll say that for anybody.
I agree.
Want to talk, Colin? Colin's next, then you, Kevin.
Just real quickly, so I agree with Mr. Aggar, I wish, I think we would have avoided half the discussion if we, you know, discussed this like a week before, so committee members could have maybe given you feedback in beforehand, we could have came to this meeting with a more comprehensive document. Just a question on the goals itself, obviously it's my first goal-setting meeting, so the school committee has to accept the goals. Do we have like the authority to change or deny, when you said you'd, you'd be able to come back as soon as Friday with different goals? I mean, I don't know what would be the best course of action, to table this and have another meeting with updated goals?
No, no.
I'm not telling.
No.
I mean, what's usually the course of action to accept? I'm not going to vote to accept these goals, that's what we should have for comprehensive.
No, we're just going to come back for you too. We're not going to table anything.
No, we're not going to table.
I'll, I'll submit, as I said, in the intermediate, like, in the interim, I will submit revised goals for consideration. I get a lot of feedback from people via email all the time, so if you wanted to shoot back an email or something, I think that's acceptable, and I'll, you know, I'll work in that way.
Right, but if we're going to accept these goals today?
I don't think that was the intent.
No.
No. I don't believe so.
No.
It wasn't.
It was a discussion.
No, that's fine, you.
Kevin?
So the answer to the question is, at least the way it's supposed to work or has worked in the past. This agenda item should say, school year '24 goal-setting, first read, which is what it's read every year that we've done, first read. At that point, you would know, we're not approving it today, it's the second, instead of it, it'll be the second read when we would approve. Instead, Mr. Dias asked a legitimate question, and all we hear down the other end of the table is, no, 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 we're not table, no, no, no. The real answer is.
Kevin, Kevin, Kevin. Can you please stay on topic for one second?
Sure.
Don't worry about what I'm saying. Take care of yourself.
Then when the gentleman's talking, there's no reason to keep saying, no, no, no.
No, no, here, there's no reason to table it. Okay, thank you for correcting me again, Mr. Perfect.
Thank you.
My point is.
And I have the floor, thank you very much.
And I'll, I'm going to interrupt you.
I have the floor.
Don't badger her, just talk regularly. I'm sick of people being bullied at this table. You can ask her whatever question you want respectfully, please, go ahead.
Here's an answer, Dr. Curly. As I stated, and as I think you understand, this is meant to be a first read. We collaborate as you indicated, so that we would come up with a second read. That second read has to be done at a public school committee meeting, and that's what I'm referring to. That's all.
Sure.
You and I are in agreement on everything that we just said.
Yep.
To go back and look, it's not badgering you, I'm not bullying you.[1700.14]
To go back and look, it's not badgering you. I'm not bullying you.
No, 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 no.
At the, this is the reason why, when I say something, and somebody else, like the chairman, wants to keep saying, "No, no, 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 no," this is the problem. I'm trying to be respectful for you and talk with you to say, "This is what it would be. First read, next meeting, public meeting, there'll be a second read." If that second read is in January, whatever, the teens, whenever the next meeting is, my stance on that was, that's going to be six months already in. And that's an even longer time. But at this point, we can't do nothing about it because we're here. So, as far as I'm concerned, as one member of the school committee, I want to have some solid goals based on achievement, based on attendance, and based on those measures. So, what I would ask is that you forward to the full school committee all of the goals that you've approved for your three assistant superintendents and your principals between now and the next meeting, so that we can review those to try to see how they can match up to possibly some sort of continuity to make sure everything's sort of going together.
No, Mr. Aguirre, make that in the form of a motion, because we're not supposed to be telling her what to do for that. If you want to make a motion that she does that, go ahead, and you get, you'll see if you get a second to vote.
So, you, you opposed to that, I guess?
I am.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we do exactly what I just suggested.
Second?
I have a motion, second.
On the motion.
On the motion.
It, it finds it totally incredulous that what I just asked you, as superintendent, for the goals for your administrators, your assistant superintendents and principals, would be not applauded or suggested from the chairman of this school committee, that he would actually indicate in a public meeting that we, as school committee, should not look at your assistant superintendent goals and your principal's goals when we're trying to set the goals for this district and you as superintendent. It blows my mind to think that somebody can actually say that in a public meeting. But with that being said, regardless of this, take this as my personal request for that information to come to us, whether the vote's up or down, with no disrespect. Because quite frankly, I don't think you'd have one problem given it, because I've asked you for things and you've given them. So, he can try to be your protector to try to make it seem like I'm picking on you and bullying you, but he, he's not correct. Because I'm trying to work with you, and I'm trying to get the information so that we can get solid goals. So, whether this is up or down, all I'm suggesting is please forward that information to me, and if you want to give it to the rest of the school committee, so be it. But to, to think that we could actually have a goal-setting and we can't get the information on what your assistant superintendents and principals have is totally incredulous by the chair and the vice chair. It's unbelievable. I yield.
So, on the, on the motion, what I was, on the motion, what I was saying was that she is, gets sometimes up to 10 to 13 emails a day asking for information from certain members of the committee. It's wildly inappropriate. I had the corporation council look at it. I'm going to give everybody something inside. My position is that she has a job to do. I think she should do it to the best of her ability. This was about goal-setting for her. So, I'm not worried about the other goals. She can use that in her evaluations of them. My point is, she has plenty on her table. Let her tackle it. That's all I'm saying. And that is not any reason to be offended, Mr. Aguirre. I think she does, as I said, a good job. I want her to do her job, not the job you tell her that she needs to do for you. And on the motion, I have a motion, a second. Deb, would you please go?
I'm sorry. Can you say what the motion is? I need to hear the motion.
The motion is that the superintendent will prepare. Go ahead.
I got it. The superintendent will get the goals from her assistant superintendents and the principal and forward them to the school committee.
That's a pretty simple way to say it, and common sense, absolute.
As you said before, you didn't have the floor, so I don't know why you're talking, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. So, the motion just to request information to get goals from you or from your assistant superintendent?
No, no.
That's not the motion.
So, I.
Was that not the motion?
No.
Till we.
That is the motion. The motion is.
All right, Mr. Aguirre. Do you yield?
I'll yield if you want.
So, here's, here's the situation. We are here on the.
I, no, I just want to know what the motion is, Kevin. That's all I want to know.
I can speak and ask and say anything I want related to this motion. Thank you very much. So, on December 9th, today, we are here today at the meeting to set the goals of the superintendent. What I have asked was, based on that, I would like to get the goals that the superintendent has approved for her three assistant superintendents and her principals. It's quite simple. It's quite basic, and if it's not already incorporated, it should have been. I don't think that's out of the line. I don't think that's, it's actually out of line if we don't do such a thing. That's showing that we're not doing our duty as school committee members to actually try to make sure that we're seeing how everything's going to be in a continuous way, working together to set goals and meaningful goals, measurable goals, smart goals, like we say to everybody else. But we have people on this committee who think we shouldn't have any goals. We shouldn't ask you any questions, and we should just let you do whatever you want. This committee member, whether Alan Rumsey says it or anything, it doesn't really matter, because I'm a school committee member elected by the public, and if I have a question to ask, I'm going to ask the question. I don't understand what this is about, whether Mr. Rumsey or anything else. I've asked you some, some very good questions. And I think there's some questions that we should get answers to. I just don't understand why we wouldn't want this information. Who in their right mind is not going to vote to have you give us that? I can't, I can't believe we even have this discussion.
Can we have a vote, Mr. Dias?
Yes, on, so on the motion, so I, just, so we're not approving these goals today. I'm not willing to approve them. Again, I'm a little confused as to what the process is here. But if this is just some sort of first read, and we're here going to come back to the committee, I don't even think it needs to be in the form of a motion to ask for the goals, if they're set goals by your assistant superintendents. I really don't see what the controversy is. It's just a normal conversation. I just don't really see even the need for a motion. It should be a simple request. And then if we're coming back with updated goals at a future meeting, which I don't think you're necessarily opposed to, although you speak to that, I just really don't see what the, the argument's about. Just get the best information we can. We just get the most updated goals that we can, what Mr. Aguirre said, with data. I don't really see how that's attacking you. That's just Mr. Aguirre doing the job. It's just us doing our job. I don't see a person with that whatsoever. So, I mean, I'll vote yes on the motion, but I really just don't see even the need. There should be a simple request from a school committee member to ask for updated goals.
Okay, okay. Are you going on?
Yeah, you said the same thing three times. Mr. Brown, Mrs. Brown?
I think whether whatever side you agree with or not, just to ask, we have maybe the controversy lies. I believe it's, it lies in overstepping, in my opinion, you know, this is where the controversy is. Are we overstepping? Question being, are we overstepping our bounds? Because our job is to evaluate the superintendent. Our job is not to evaluate the assistant superintendent or any principal of any school. It's not our job to manage them or to evaluate them. That's the job of Dr. Curly. So, I think that's where the controversy lies. It's not that it's not good information to have, but I think to request it at a meeting that was supposed to be about her setting her goals, not us setting her goals, from what I gather, right? So, we're here to listen and contribute. Basically, I thought this meeting was about contributing what we think we'd like to see happen and have her then take that information. So, she has goals that, you know, are in the direction of where the committee wants to see the school department. So, I think that's where the controversy is, is that, is it really something that's necessary? Because technically, that really isn't our job. So, I don't know, but everybody has their own opinion. That's fine. With that, I yield.
Can we take a vote? Mr. Aguirre?
So, the, this goal-setting process is to create joint goals, superintendent school committee, joint. That means there's two people, like both sides. That's part of the issue why I'm suggesting that we need some information in order to make those together so that we can try to figure out what's the overarching goal and how we can work together. But the real controversy here, to answer Mr. Dias's question, the reason why this is controversial, why we have to take a vote, in Kevin Aguirre's opinion, is because the chairman of this committee is trying to play protector to the superintendent and not allow anybody to ask her any questions. That's the answer from this member. That's exactly what's happening. Because how dare anybody question the superintendent of schools? And he's trying to be her protector. And that includes the duties that anyone has if I want to ask for information during this, during the month. We have a right to ask for that. We're elected by the public to ask questions. Asking questions doesn't have to be bad. But the answer to your question, Mr. Dias, is our chairman is trying to be the protector for Dr. Curly. That's why we're taking this vote. I agree with you. We shouldn't have to.
All right, Mr. Aguirre, as a mind reader, you know what's in my head, so I'm glad you're able to present it to the others. My point is that it's not our job to ask her to bring documents to us. Ask questions is what you said. I'm not saying anything about the questions. I'm having a problem when you say to us, "Bring me three evaluations. Bring me five." That is not our job. So, that's what I'm talking about. But if you decide that you can read minds tonight, then we may have a shorter meeting, because you'll know everything before it happens. So, you may be in a better spot. My point is, it is not our job to ask them, "Oh, can I get three of these documents? Can I get this?" It's not. Our job is to ask questions, as you said, but not request stuff. That's not our job.
Well, I, I.
But if you want to do it as a public FOIA request, you have your 10 days and you can send it in, but not to request. Go ahead, Mr. Aguirre.
I would respectfully disagree. First off, I don't know how to read minds, and you know that.
Well, it sounds like you do.
So, what happens is, what happens is, when, when somebody asks a tough question, your go-to response, Mr. Chairman, is, "Let's try to laugh. Let's try to giggle. Let's try to do some kind of angle here so we can get people off topic." Don't get off topic with this particular motion or request. This particular motion and request was quite simple. And all it was, was that in order for us to say the evaluation and what we're going to do for goals for our superintendent, I believe, as I think anyone that's in education should believe, that getting the goals and what she's approved for goals of her administration, assistant superintendents and principals, actually can help drive the discussion for what types of things are we going to do. Because quite frankly, if her goals, to them, as generic as this, which I don't think they are, which we've just talked about, we are not going to make the gains that we need to make in the school system. So, you can say all you want, that you don't feel we should ask any of these questions. We shouldn't ask for documents. That's you. Everybody has their rights. All I'm asking is, all I'm asking is, you want respect. All I'm asking is that you respect every other member as well, including when we're talking.
Let's vote on the motion.
You don't need to keep going, "No, no, 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 no."
Let's vote, yeah. Okay, let's vote on the motion.
Just be respectful and be equal with everybody. Thank you. Are you?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
No.
Ms. Laramie?
No.
Ms. Perera?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
No. Mr. Dias?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous? You want to call it? We should call it. Go ahead.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Bailey? Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Laramie?
Yes.
Perera?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?